March time, march. Color orange. Present colors. Ready to begin.
The United States of America and the Republic of America. My nation is a heart in visible, but the religion is a sorrow.
Terry, color. Forward, march.
Please be seated. Good evening and welcome to the North Torrance Homeowners Association General Meeting. My name is Mary Ann Hamada and I am the President. It's great to see all of you and thank you for coming this evening. We'd like to thank the North Torrance Junior ROTC under the leadership of Raul Duran for beginning our meetings with a professional flag salute. On behalf of the North Torrance Homeowners Association, we'd like to grant you this donation, Raul. Okay, so, um, any officials in the audience here this evening? No? Okay. Um, I'd like to introduce the North Torrance Homeowners Association Board of Directors, Rita Anderson, Secretary. Then Terry Treasure. Zora Muhammad, Director at Large. Dr. Anil Muhammad, Director at Large. Terry Fury, First Vice President, and Brandon Mattson could not be here with us tonight. Um, we also welcome back Jesse Negrete, Director at Large. And Kurt Wiederman is a Director at Large who's going to be joining our board as well. Our annual treasure report is posted at the review for, um, for your review. Um, also tonight's meeting, we have a sponsor, Glasspan Real Estate. Alan, thank you very much. So tonight is our candidate forum for the Torrance Unified School Board District. As the moderator, it is my job to keep the forum running smooth. I'm not a censor and I do not decide what is true or what is false. We would appreciate if you would keep your applause until the end of the evening and if you can also keep the chatter to a minimum. Our questionnaires are Rita Anderson and Rebecca Terry in the middle. And we're ready to begin. Okay, we're going to start with opening statements. You have one minute and a half. And, uh, Mr. Gerson.
My name is Jeremy Gerson. My wife Jennifer and I have been married approximately 13 years and own a home in the central part of Torrance. We have a fifth grade daughter and a second grade son who both attend school in Torrance Unified. I came to Torrance with my family in 1986, so I've been a resident for 32 years. I am a graduate of Torrance High School. I am a Tartar. I used to participate in the City of Torrance Summer Musicals back when they're in the Marseille Auditorium. When the Torrance Rose Float Association decided to start putting residents on the floats, I, uh, they chose one male and one female. I was the privileged guy who represented our city on the Pasadena Tournament of Roses. The Torrance Sister City Association chose me as their 44th Adult Leader to represent us in Kashua, Japan. The PTA last year gave me the Honorary Service Award. I've done countless hours of volunteering, more than 20 years for AYSO, multiple years for Torrance Little League, Boy Scouts of America for my son, um, even at our children's school, running enrichment sessions. Last year I did financial literacy sessions and our children took first and second in LA County in the Stock Market Game. I've served on two different PTAs. I've served on countless school and district committees, including the Mathematics Achievement Committee, Textbook Adoption Committee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Deutsch?
Thank you for giving me, um, the opportunity to present to the North Homeowners Association. I also want to thank audience members and my fellow candidates for the commitment to our schools. Six years ago, I had the honor of being appointed to the school board and five years ago, I was elected to the school board as, um, as the number one vote getter. Over the last six years, I am very proud of my accomplishments as a school board member. We launched and gained approval of historic bond measures that included funds for upgrading security at schools, improving technology in the classrooms, gyms in the middle schools, science labs at elementary schools, auditoriums at the high schools, and just recently the Aquatic Center of Districtwide. Our schools have undergone a dramatic physical improvement for the first time in almost 50 years during my tenure as a school board member. We have improved the curriculum, expanded teacher training, and achieved a level of academic excellence that is one of the highest in the state of California. The reason that I want to continue as a school board member is that I am passionate and committed to seeing our schools continue to improve and enhance student learning and seeing our schools continue to be a model to other districts for our efficiency, effectiveness, fiscal responsibility, and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for coming. It's hot in here, so thank you for putting up with this craziness. So, but welcome. And I want to say what a privilege it is for me to sit with all these people here. Uh, my name is James Hahn and, um, uh, I'm married to my beautiful wife, Sora. She's an RTI teacher in the Torrance Unified School District. I have three children, a senior, I mean, a freshman at Torrance High School, a seventh grader at Hall Middle School, and a fifth grader at Adams Elementary School. Uh, my wife and I are committed to our schools. We have served our schools in so many different fashions, in different committees, different organizations. I organized a golf tournament for our school for the past eight years. I've been on school site council. I was given the Honorary Service Award four years ago. You name it, we've done everything we could for our little school, Adams, as well as Hall, and now we're excited that, are excited at Torrance High. At the same time, my vision for our school district is very simple. Uh, first of all, success. I want to see every child to achieve success in whatever field that they choose, whether athletics, academia, arts, whatever it may be, but to help them to achieve that success. The other thing that I want to see is safety. Obviously, we want to make sure that our kids are safe and secure in their schools, especially in light of all that's going around to other schools around the nation. I thought it's very important that we make sure our kids are safe and secure so that they can be successful. And lastly, to be stable, not only today, but for many years to come, so future students can continue to grow as well.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
Good evening. My name is Betty Lu. I'd like to start out with thanking the North Torrance Homeowners Association and President Mary Ann Hamada for putting on this wonderful candidate's forum for all of us and for you, the audience, for willing to spend the afternoon, the evening with us to get to know us before you vote and also to educate us on the issues that you care about. And then, and definitely I want to commend my fellow candidates here who are willing to put themselves out there and perform public service for all of us. So, thank you to you all. I'm running for school board because I want to make sure that our students are prepared uh, to, to take on the opportunities and the challenges of the 21st century. We need to make sure that our students have all the skills they need for this coming, changing economy and, um, such as automation, a lot more coding, and, and various different fields that's coming up right now. As a long-time volunteer, I help students prepare for what I can as a volunteer for the future. I have started a, um, I start two math competition clubs at two different schools. I've taught art and music and a volunteer as a librarian. Um, I have also, I've always been the chair of the after-school enrichment program and I've served on two PTAs at two different schools and also I'm on the Executive Board of Torrance Education Foundation. So, thank you. I look forward to your questions tonight. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
I too would like to thank everyone for being here. It is a little warm and uncomfortable. Uh, my name is Michael Warmers and I'm currently in my second term on the school board. My wife and I have three daughters, one of which has graduated from our schools, two of which are still in our schools. Before I started down this path, I was a typical PTA dad and moved and lift and carried heavy things. I was not satisfied with the results of that effort, so I went ahead and joined the Ed Foundation and was part of the team that put together the South Bay Enrichment Academy, the SBA, in its very first year. I wanted to help start that, so. These are very awkward. You always do sit here and you brag. I'm not comfortable with these. Uh, because of my involvement, my local homeowners association and Mayor Scotto's, um, SunCal Committee, I was recruited to work on the first school bonds, Measures Y and Z. Because of that effort, I received an honorary service award from the PTA. I'm proud of that work. We did good things. Uh, we got school bonds passed, which we haven't been able to do in this, this community for a while, and I'm very proud of the work that's been done with that. During this time, I became a City of Torrance Library Commissioner because I feel there's nothing more important than teaching our children how to read. I held that position for two years until I got elected on the school board. Needless to say, I'm deeply involved in the City of Torrance and its school district. I've been, like I said, twice two years, now nine, two terms, nine years on our school board, so, um, I'd like to think we've done good work and done good things and I hope to get your support to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, the, the first question for you all is following up on what you just talked about, your opening statements. What in that that you spoke about, the education, training, and/or experience that you talked about most qualifies you to be an effective, effectively serve on the school board? And I'll start with Ms. Deutsch.
The, um, I guess my, my strong PTA leadership, um, I actually started as a room parent and Adventures in Art docent, and I started as a PTA president at DeRiviere Elementary School and South High School. I, uh, went up to the Torrance Council of PTAs and I was president there. I'm currently 33rd District PTA President that oversees a total of 20 school district, um, PTAs in Southern California. I'm also part of the Board of Managers for the California State PTA. I find that, um, my exposure to PTA has given me incredible, um, wide range of education in terms of, um, advocating for children and students and how, um, I can go to Sacramento and, uh, speak with local politicians and talk about what specifically is our local priorities, so that I find that that's, that's important to me.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, and Ms. Lu, same question.
Thank you for asking the question. I believe that of all the things that most qualifies me to be on the board, uh, here on Torrance Unified School District is my long-term, long time, over 10-plus years as a volunteer, being on the grounds at the schools and at different schools. I also started out as a room mom when my son was in preppy. And for those of you who don't know, preppy is the, a pre-K when you're almost ready for king, you're, you're old enough to be in kindergarten, but, um, no, no, you're not, you're, you're just barely old enough to be in kindergarten, but then you're going to be too young and, and so there's a choice for you to go into a pre-kindergarten class here in Torrance Unified School District. So, um, I started at preppy and I also went on to volunteer as a docent for Adventures in Art. I served on that for several years, uh, teaching music, uh, teaching art, also, like I mentioned, music, and also was on the PTA Board, Executive Board for several years. I have more on my flyers, please pick one up. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gerson?
I think first is my experience and my work experience. So I'm, this is my 21st year as a teacher and my 16th year as a teacher in Torrance Unified School District. Not only have I served on, as I was indicating, countless committees, both at the school and district site, but I've watched over the last decade and a half as we implemented these programs and I know what they look like in the classroom and I know, um, how they, how they turn out. Gives me a perspective of being able, as a teacher, to sit on the board and actually go, well, this is what it would really look like in a classroom. Also, my education. So, my bachelor's degree and master's degree were both at Whittier College, which is a great teacher's school. And, uh, then on to my doctorate. I'm working on it at the University of Southern California. I think about the leadership class and the accountability class and understanding how politics has been working on teachers and on parents, and now it's my turn to come and bring that. Thank you.
Mr. Hahn?
For, for me, um, for those of you who do not know, I'm the Senior Pastor of Redeemer Presbyterian Church. I have two sides in LA and La Mida. And I think one of the threes, that reason why I highlight that is because of the fact that the quality that I think that, because what I do and how it can be effectual in the board is to bring about conflict resolution. I think that the biggest issue now confronting our board and our teachers is trust. We need someone to be able to bridge that gap, someone that's good at reconciliation, not about who's right and who's wrong, but to bring people together. And I think that's one of the gifts that I have as a preacher, because that's what I do. That's my job, is to bring reconciliation in many different ways between God and people and people want to know each other and within with society itself. And so, because of that, I'm able to hear and understand and try to figure out, not compromise, but to come into a loving resolve where we all can be excited about the decision we make together. Not about what we're giving up, but what we're going to gain together. And I think that's a gift that I have to bring to the board.
Thank you. And Mr. Warmers?
Um, thank you. I, uh, I have a unique situation where I sign the front of a paycheck and when we were working on Measures Y and Z and we realized it was going to be $250 million pulled out of this community and dumped into the school district, I wanted to be involved. I was concerned about people who were running who weren't involved, they didn't have their kids even in school. I'm the only one on, still on the board with kids in school. I changed this, this cycle, but, um, that's part of the reason I ran. And I felt my business knowledge proves useful and it has. I've got a bit of a construction background, so working with Balfour Beatty has been an interesting experience. Um, they, they can deliver sometimes, sometimes they don't, and it's, I've called them on it more times than I care to count. My ability to work inside of an organization like TUSD is part of my day job. I, I work inside large companies, so it's been interesting to see that, that I can tell you, we're, we're really good at, at not spending money on unnecessary seats because I, I watch companies do that. Two, one, there.
Thank you.
That's nerve-wracking.
Okay, thank you. Here's question number two. Are you satisfied with the current security and safety conditions of our schools? And if not, how would you improve them? And Mr. Warmers, you're first.
Am I satisfied? We're improving it as we speak. We're installing cameras and door locks and keypad entries, um, at all our schools. That's in the process of going in. I used to sell security systems and maintain security systems, put a card in a slot and a door unlocks. I can tell you that what we're putting in is a good idea and it's useful and it's helpful. It will not save us from a maniac with a gun, but it will keep upset people out of our, out of our school campuses. I repeat to people on a regular basis, even though no one wants to hear this, you stand a better chance of choking on a hot dog than being shot on a cool site, on a school site, just mathematically, that's how it works. But, that being said, we need to step up and quit living in denial about what an active shooter situation looks like. We're in the process of reevaluating some of our procedures because one of those procedures needs to change, that if, um, a school active shooting, shooting situation arrives, the teacher's going to have to sweep through the hallway and gather up the kids and they may not be able to get into a safe room. That's something we don't want to talk about. That's part of the denial that we're not admitting.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
For me, as a result of me having, having my kids attend the schools that they go to, so far, what I've noticed, again, limited experience, um, that I do feel like my kids are safe. I think they've done a lot better job of securing up the security around our schools. For example, Adams, we have our new gates and, and Hall, they're putting in a new system as well. I think that they're putting steps in place, um, in order for kids to feel safer. But I think so often, we focus so much on the outward threat rather than thinking about the inward threat. I, I think so often, safety is not only physical safety, but I think there's an issue of emotional safety and things like that. I think that a lot of kids still feel a sense of insecurity, bullying, bullying at their local schools. And I think that we need to do a better job of addressing those issues. Physically, we can only do so much. Like you said, we cannot prevent every maniac killer out there. But what we can focus on is helping the students learn how to work with each other and get along with each other to encourage one another.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
Yes, hi, thank you. I, I do also appreciate the new gates and security measures that our district has put on for all our schools. I think it is, uh, in the beginning, I didn't like the way it looked, but then I, and then realized that the gates around our school do tend to slightly discourage a potential, uh, a violent person from going in. And also, I understand that our schools are now locked down, um, or at least the gates to the school are locked, other than at the beginning of the school day and at the end of the school day when we have to get our kids or when the kids have to leave. However, I am definitely against arming teachers with guns. I do not believe that guns should be anywhere on campus, at our schools. I understand that there are, uh, a lot of opinion out there in, in regards to arming our teachers, but I do not think that, that, I, I do believe that that would do more harm than good. And in addition, I do, uh, think that we need to do all that we can to give a sense of security to both our students and our parents and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gerson?
Uh, I have to be honest. Our gates started, uh, we're supposed to start working this week and I don't feel my children are safer. I push a button and it rings to a phone and I'm like, I'm John here to bring Jane, my daughter, her lunch, and they buzz me in. And I don't, I don't feel my children are any safer when the gate opens and the kindergarten yard's to the left and the first grade classes are to the right. And, uh, The Washington Post tells us that most school shooters are 16 years of age. That's the median age. So, um, we do need to address it. We do need to address bullying and how students feel in school and so that they feel safe. I have friends at the Sean Vernon Feliciano Amazing Day Foundation who work with colleges and I would ask them for resources for high school students. I, um, would like to give schools, especially the high schools, enough counselors to be able to counsel the students so that we can avoid future problems and take care of our children better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch?
Um, I, I always feel that there's an improvement, open for improvement, um, when it comes to safety and our students. Just last year, um, we had a new chief to the police department for Torrance, um, Chief Irvine and Chi, um, together with our Superintendent, Dr. Mannan, they drafted a letter and sent it out and shared it, um, with all of the students and parents regarding their collaboration and how to maintain safety within our community as well as our campuses. Um, they, you know, we continue to work with, um, you know, the, um, the, uh, for police officers that are assigned full-time to patrol our schools. We have, um, they are able to respond and investigate, um, safety school threats, um, and then also they are working and collaborating with disaster drills. So there's plenty of opportunities and we will continue to work with the community and our chief for safety and campuses. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. According to School Data Nerd, which is a database located at Los Angeles Schools, North High students only had a 61% pass rate on AP exams compared to 74% of students at South High and 83% of students at West High. How do you plan to direct the district to address this educational disparity? And I'll start with Ms. Lu.
Hi, thank you for the question. Um, I have two kids and my older one is in high school right now and he also took the AP exam, um, for this last school year. And although he did all right, he, he did, you know, pretty well, I do, I am concerned about our scores overall in the district. To have such a disparity between 61% and 74% is, it's not, it's not acceptable for me. I am very proud and happy that South High School has such a higher rate, but we've got to look at the practices and what policies there are and what help we can give to the other, uh, parts of Torrance, uh, north, center, west, uh, whatever it is, and talk to the teachers about it and see what things can we do as a district to bring up the scores for all of our students because we are all unified in one system. Uh, Torrance students should not have, um, a different form of instruction from one side to another, one having more than the other. I definitely believe in equity for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch, same question.
Well, um, I think that we should look at best practices within the high schools that are having high scores. What specifically is working for them? Why is it that these students are, um, we, we're having a higher percentage at the other schools? And then share it with all of the schools. I, I, I'm a firm believer of, you know, shared best practices. To me, that's, that is an indicator of making sure that each individual student, and there's equity within each individual student. To me, that's been a very, very huge proponent, um, for me in looking at the big picture in all of schools and all the students, but as well as, as AP, um, would be a, a good indicators to, let's find out specifically what's working at some schools and how can we apply them, uh, and work with the other schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gerson, same question.
The disparity is something that must be, must be addressed. The first thing I would do is I would speak to Mr. Christopher Schech. The principal of North High School is an extremely admirable man. I have deep disrespect for him and I bet you he has wonderful ideas. I would want to hear, what could I do? What could the school, district, and the school board offer him to improve the situation? Because I know he has ideas. I'd also want to hear from the parents. I want to hear. I know they have ideas. They can tell me where our weaknesses and make suggestions to me. Our current school board, I don't feel like they're really listening to the parents, which is one of the main reasons why I'm running, um, as a Torrance parent. So, between Mr. Schech and parents, I know we could come up with great solutions and direct the resources needed and create the programs to make our students even more successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
Two things. One, I think if we grant Mr. Schech a couple more years, we're going to see a huge improvement in the, um, AP scores here at North. He's one of the best principals we have at TUSD. I can't say enough good things about him. You guys have got the best principal, in my opinion, that we have. Number two, I was pointing into the stick on trying to move the calendar so we could actually increase the quantity of days our students are in a classroom before they take the AP exam. I believe that this will make an improvement. I watched my oldest daughter take AP classes and when I done with the AP class, she spent four weeks sitting around playing on her phone. This will shift everything a couple of weeks forward so that we have less of that kind of a situation. There's lots of reasons certain areas of a town will perform one way as opposed to another. We can't point our finger at any one specific thing and hope to solve that problem. What we can do is, is, as I've heard my colleagues talk about, try to raise all the ships at the same time. AP exams, 52% of our students take AP exams district-wide, so they've become a very big part of our lives and I got nothing I can say in two seconds, so.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Hahn?
As my wife always says, when you hear that kind of data, you always got to look always underneath that data. So often, when you talk about the number of people passing, like Mr. Warmers said, every area is different. And if we were to look at our schools and ask ourselves overall, like, um, low income, special needs, demographics, national ethnicities, is it all equal across the board? And I think that's what we have to look at. What I have to, come to understand so often is that there is a disparity in terms of those issues. So when you have more of those kids at one certain school, the schools will be a lot more elevated. When you have a lot more kids of a different kind of demographic, it's going to be a lot different. And we got to focus on that area. And we can't just say we're going to be the best practices. The best practice at South may not be the best practices at North. They're radically different. We have to understand the unique situation that is in North and to determine how can we intervene to help these kids rise to the top. Every culture of a school is different and everything's going to work differently in a different school, but we have to come together and understand to support and to build them up.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next question. As we near completion of Bond Measures T and U, what will you do to maintain our facilities to avoid future bonds for taxpayers? And we're going to start with Mr. Gerson.
I was, I've been working for Torrance Unified under our last three bond measures. That first one, I, when I witnessed it, it was, uh, the mistakes were, were so horrible to me and the safety, I remember having, as teachers, we had to jump over a large spool trying to get into the gate, um, completely unsafe. And then with more bond measures with, I'm hearing high schools that, the seating wasn't put amphitheater style and, um, building a new pool that's far back that nobody can see and nobody's allowed to participate and not discussing how we're going to maintain it and how we're going to staff it. And the next thing I know, we have to close Hamilton Adult School. Yes, we do have to be much more fiscally responsible and making sure that our money is going toward the, the facilities we have and taking care of the needs of our community. When we're closing Hamilton Adult School, at the same time, we're talking about AP scores at North High, I think we see the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
I am glad that the bonds have passed several years ago. I think that all our schools actually need the extra funds that is needed to upgrade the infrastructure. However, I would prefer that there is no more bonds in the future and we just do with what we have. What we have done this past time, it's, it's done, it's all set, it's all done in contract. The whole phase is almost going to be over, but I'm a community person and for what money we have now, from now on, looking from now to the future, I believe that we can get the community to be more involved. I am a very community-oriented person. I do many, I've done many of my projects, um, volunteer projects for school based from, from help of friends, uh, school parents, and business community out there. I really believe that this is what, it takes a village to, to raise a kid and especially to give to give them proper education. So what I would want to do is minimize whatever costs that we have and seek out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
First of all, I want to thank Mike for passing that thing, the bonds. No matter how we look at it, it was a great thing. We see the school, yeah, the implementation of it was absolutely horrible. Even at our school right now at Adams, we have windows you can't even open. There's no air conditioning, you know, so it's hot and the kids are, so again, I'm thankful. And again, we can't, we can't blame everything on that situation. Obviously, there's gonna be issue when you build, I understand that. Regarding the future, I think that the necessity of the bonds will not be needed and the reason why is because we're moving to a different future. The future that we're headed toward is gonna be more technology-oriented, it's gonna be more online-based, it's gonna be more driven by different modes of learning. And I think that we have to look into those modes of learning that may not need, for example, gymnasium or like, you know, new buildings or whatever it may be. We can use what we have and to use technology and to use the modern advances to supplement what we have now so that our kids can receive the best education. And they're gonna need that education because our future is not gonna be the same as it is today. And so we have to prepare ourselves for that future rather than building buildings, put money to that.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
When I was approached to work on measures Y and Z, my kids were at Arnold Elementary, which is an old brick school. It was in pretty good shape. It was like walking in a Back the Future set because everything looked like it was 1962, but it was in pretty good shape. Then I saw pictures of McGruder's School, I saw pictures of South High's locker room, I saw pictures of hallways here at North, I saw pictures of the concrete that was broken apart here, and I thought I was looking at something not in the United States. That couldn't possibly be our schools. That's why I climbed on board to pass these. But I said from the very beginning, if we don't carve out dollars for maintenance and operations that we've cut immensely over the years, if we don't carve out dollars for this, in 15 years, our schools will look the way they did when we started this bond process. And we begun that process, we've carved out some money for our fields. For example, it takes about $5 million to go ahead and replace all the AstroTurf, so we're saving $500,000 a year. We have a fund that will apply that 10 years from now to replacing all the AstroTurf. We need to do similar things elsewhere in our budget. We can't, the most important thing we do is put a teacher in front of students, but that's not the only thing we do. We have to remember that.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch?
So the, the whole focus with maintaining our, our new construction is going to be to be fiscally responsible as well as to be responsible in maintaining our, and, and just help with our investments. And it's very, very challenging, any of us that are homeowners, that we've done a remodel, I mean, in years, you will see that, that we need to definitely improve or, or maintain. It's also one opportunity though for us to look in the future, to, to save money. And also, I personally feel that our bond oversight committee has been very, very fiscally responsible and has been transparent in terms of how our construction has been going on and hopefully, once we complete them, we will be very responsible in terms of how maintaining them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And following up, the measure U was passed to construct the aquatic facility to serve students and the community. Presently, the board has passed a fee structure for group use starting at $200 to rent the full, full pool. What would be a reasonable amount for individual members of the community to, to pay to use the aquatic center and how would they be able to access this facility? And I'm starting with Ms. Deutsch.
Well, I, I personally feel that we should, should open it up to the community, obviously. And if personal, community members want to use the pool, they should definitely be open to doing that. This is something that I would definitely work with the school board and our school district to find out what kind of fee schedule we would, we would be providing. I mean, obviously, we, we have our plunge in the community, in the city, but we definitely would be open to, to the conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
Have you been to the aquatic center? It's not a plunge-type pool. It doesn't have a shallow end. It's, it's a large Olympic-style pool and we don't provide lifeguards. You have to provide your own lifeguard. We provide lifeguards for our students, but we don't provide lifeguards for outside services. That's part of the reason it's set up the way it is, is you have to form a club, you have to hire a lifeguard, you have to pay the money to come in and go in and go swimming there. Because there's not a shallow end you can go splash in. You jump in and you're over your head in water. It needs to be opened up to the public and I feel that it is stumbling in the right direction. The trouble is, is the quantity of cost involved in the process stuns a lot of people. But that's the same problem we've got with our gyms, that's the same problem we've got with our cafeterias. We aren't here to subsidize the community's ability to use our facilities. That takes money out of our classrooms and I don't want to do that. That's where we need to put our money, not take it out of there. But what I do want us to do instead is to come up with an equitable way of making all these facilities usable. We all are paying half a billion dollars to have them updated. We all want to use them. So we need to work on that. We're not done.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Lu, same question.
Yes, hi. I think this is a great idea to open up the life, the, the swimming pool to the public at times and set hours where the, the teams or the rented or the pre-obligated swimmers would not be using it. Oh, it'd be great, it would be great so that my kids could, you know, stop bugging their friends' parents to go over to their houses and bother them. But at the same time, I do have a juris doctorate background in terms of education and I do see a potential problems there could be if we don't hire a lifeguard. Lifeguards do cost a bit and I think that what we can do is look into the reasonable fees that other public swimming pools might have and also to make sure that whatever charge, fee we charged to the public to open is not gonna be a profit-making revenue for our school district. And I also want to furthermore, and possibly even having some of the, the, the pool right now is rented out to other, other places and we make profit of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hahn?
I agree with all the statements up here regarding the equitable access to the pool. I think that obviously we paid it with the bond and there, we should all be able to have access to it. However, the fee structure should be reasonable and fair, but it cannot only be with that one-time cost. For example, if you just have hired a lifeguard and you, that's fine, you just charge it for the lifeguard, but eventually, having the people walk on the, on the cement, people bumping into things, things are gonna break. That's not part of the fee structure. So you're gonna have to pay a little bit more than the minimum amount that you're gonna have to use it, right? Because wear and tear, after a while, the wear and tear is gonna be there. And I understand that. And I think that if we can consider that so that we won't have to go into the budget to help prepare those things, we can somehow create a fee that will help us prepare for the future as well as so that we can enjoy it now with the lifeguard fees, whatever it may be. I think that's a great idea. Not only pools, but soccer fields, the football fields, every field. For as a parent, soccer parent, it's impossible five fields in Torrance. It'd be great if we could open all the fields up too as well.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Gerson?
Obviously, renting a pool is, is not something that teachers do, so I would first start with the city of Torrance, who has the plunge and understand what does it take to, to run a pool facility? What is the cost behind it? Not just for our district, but look at other places. I want to look at other cities and the way that they run it. And I really want to understand all the costs involved so that we can set a fair structure. I, I agree with some of my colleagues up here who, we, it sounds like we should provide a lifeguard. I would want my children to have a lifeguard provided, in which case, we would need to look at setting up times at which we could provide this service and in, in that way of getting group time scheduled for, for individuals of the city. In that way, we could reduce the cost for individual citizens in that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Torrance Unified School District has accepted the recommendation of the 7-11 Committee to lease, not sell, Hamilton School Site. What do you envision for this surplus property? And we're gonna start with Mr. Hahn.
First of all, I'm glad that the North Torrance Home Association and people have come together to at least come to an agreement on this, at least that it wasn't sold, it's leased out. I think what needs to be done here, I think one of the things is, whenever we make a decision on something like that, I think that there has to be a collective vision for that. It's not about what you're gonna lose, but somehow you've gotta be communicated about what you're going to gain. And I think that's what we want to see here. We want to see something that will enable the, the community here in North Torrance to thrive as a result of leasing out this property. You know, that's what I would want to see. I would want to see something that the community can come and celebrate, that you know what, if we're gonna make a decision, if we're gonna lease it out to, we should be able to bring all the North Torrance people in the community here as well to have a say, you know what, and to have a voice about what they would want for the sake of the future. To create a vision for that area, not just simply a temporary thing of leasing out to somebody, but have a future vision for it.
Thank you. Mr. Gerson?
I was so sad to hear about the selling and now the leasing and all the confusion around it. The community should have been involved from the beginning. I think that part of the problem, what I'm hearing, that there are people who, "Oh, well, we're not, we don't have people attending at Hamilton Adult School." I think that was a failure of our district and our board. Nobody asked the community, "Well, what could we provide at this facility that would generate more interest and bring more people in?" I, I think we are losing an amazing opportunity. I met a wonderful person who talked about how his wife learned English at the Hamilton Adult School and where will future people like, like this family who came here, what will they do? So I'm very saddened by it. I, I wish we could do something to save Hamilton Adult School. I wish we would have taken that $7 million that we were getting from a developer and used that to save this and, and really engaged the community more to provide better opportunities at that facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
Allow me to clarify, the $7 million we're getting from a developer, we're getting in $61,000 chunks as they sell off property. So we're not getting $7 million check, we're getting $61,000 checks only when they sell off these properties. The whole issue involving the Hamilton School Site was several different moving parts on it. First off, I personally wanted to push for a lease because the lease would add $3 to $4 million to the general fund for the next 75 years. As it sits today, it's a $45 million asset if we sold it on the street. Again, as a businessman, I didn't get elected to take a $45 million asset and let it sit partially empty. We'll never put kids back on that site because it's too close to the 405. We wouldn't be allowed to by ED Code, state of California would intervene. So we're kind of stuck here. I understand there's some real deep feelings involved in this property and this community. I get that and I understand that, but this is not that simple a thing to solve. And as a good elected official, I can't look at a $45 million asset or $4 million a year for 75 years and let it go.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
Yes, hi. In regards to the Hamilton Adult School, I've looked into this and I, in general, I, I believe that even though it is technically the, the property of the school district, I do believe that just like our city is, the regional residents have a big say in it. As a commissioner for over 14 years in the city of Torrance, when there are very controversial issues, we actually hold a lot of hearings for the very general public to come in and speak. There are always gonna be both sides of an issue and I think what matters a lot is how many people come up and care and spend the evening out there to, to speak on how they feel. I, generally, I, just knowing what I've known so far is, I myself was a student for, at the adult school here locally. It wasn't at Hamilton because I don't live as close here, but if we do to close that school, the only adult schools that are available are only in the southern part. So I think it's important that we do whatever we can to keep it here for us.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch?
Just a couple of things. It, it is Hamilton Adult School, one of our adult schools, and there was a 7-11 committee that was formed with community leaders and community parents and there were opportunities for the community to come and with open meetings to express their concerns and specifically what it was that you, we were, I mean, the, the school district was very open in, in inviting the community to, to voice whatever concerns or, or issues that they had. One of the things that we definitely want to do is consider the future of our school district. To us, it's very important that we look at today as well as the future of all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. In light of recent contentious negotiations with the Torrance Teachers Association, how will you repair the relationship between the school board and the association? And Mr. Warmers, I'm starting with you.
Fascinating. I, I have begun the process. I've reached out to Debra Bush and Julie Shankle and Kim Lee, three of the TTA members. It got off to a good start and then I seem to have shot myself in the foot and I'm trying to recover from that. It is gonna be truly a one-day-at-a-time kind of effort to rebuild this relationship. We drifted so far apart in the negotiation process, we have to try to get back together and understand what each of us are trying to say. I really believe that we can get back on the same page. You gotta remember, I got elected right after we had the Great Recession. In my second or third meeting, I laid off 150 teachers. It was the most painful thing I'd ever done in 40-some years of life. I don't want to ever do that again and I want to get to a point where I don't ever have to think about doing that again. And I think we can, if we can rebuild the relationship with the TTA, get it functional again, get it where we understand each other and we agree with each other and we're working together, we can achieve something. The way it is now, it'll be pretty rocky.
Thank you. And Ms. Deutsch, with you.
I have always had an open communication with a group of teachers that represent the teachers' union. I, I always felt and have still continue to feel that my rapport with the teacher union representatives that I have met with, that whenever we met, that if issues ever came up or there were concerns, that I would take them to the superintendent and I would hope that resolutions came about. I will continue to do that. I, I personally feel that my intention, if I am elected again to the school board, is to maintain that open dialogue and continue to listen and to open, to be open to whatever concerns or issues they have. Because I definitely want to have an incredible relationship with teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gerson?
I think that being a Torrance teacher makes me already the best person to start to bridge that gap. By putting me on the school board, I will have to give up my teaching position, but my, my feelings and my relationships will exist and I will be able to help mend a lot of the wounds and, and give voice to where there, there really seem to be none. Mr. Stefan gave a great commentary before the vote and said it's gonna take several years. Well, I think with the current school board, it, it will take several years, but if you choose to bring in new members such as myself, then I think that healing process will, will decrease immensely and will bring teachers back and will bring the district together and will do good work for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hahn?
First of all, I think that on both sides, there are good people on the board as well as the TT. I don't want that to be misunderstood. I have tremendous respect for our board members as well as for the TTA as well, but sometimes I think that it helps to bring a unique, a new perspective. And I think the reason why so often is that even though there may be open dialogue, people might still be closed-minded. You know, you all seen the Kavanaugh hearings? You see the Democrats and Republicans and you're like, "Oh my, can they not open their minds a little bit?" But everyone is so deeply entrenched in what they want to see that they can't hear each other's voices. Sometimes maybe it brings someone on the outside, maybe someone who doesn't fit in between two parties, that maybe can see a unique perspective, to bring that perspective in and to bring healing. Because when trust is eroded, it is very difficult to get that trust back. There will always be skepticism, there will always be a sense of, of doubt, and that's why I think that sometimes it does help. And that's why we have the opportunity to bring new people in when we vote.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Lu?
It is very sad that we actually don't have trust between the district and the teachers right now. I think that it's very important for all our students and for our community, parents, kids, to work together. And this is actually one of my reasons I want to come in. With my background, I am not a teacher. I don't have family members who are her teachers. I'm not on the school board. I'm, I'm very much in the middle. I am very neutral. And the way my personality is, I am very approachable, very open, so open that don't ever play poker with me. But, I know, a little too much, but sorry, I drifted off. But I definitely want to get suggestions from both sides. I want to hear from the teachers, what things we can do to make them, to repair this relationship that's been hurt and damaged. I want to hear from the board, the current board, and administrators to see what things we can do, you know, what leeways from both sides, both sides have to give and take.
Thank you.
10% of districts in the state of California have merit systems. Torrance Unified School District is one of them. What is your understanding of the merit system and what does it promote? We're going to start with Mr. Gerson.
I'm a little confused if you're referring to VAMs or what do you mean by merit systems? I know that we currently have a teacher pay structure based upon experience and education. Classified employees is different. As far as accountability goes, other certificated, like principal and assistant principals, are not evaluated on a regular basis. I know principals who five, 10 years later have not seen an evaluation. That's one of my big three. I think that all members of Torrance Unified should have evaluations. They need to experience it, they need to set goals, they need to improve and work to their highest capacity. So, in the current system, we have no administrator accountability system and I would love to see one implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
If you're referring to the merit systems for teachers, there is a reason why there's only 10% out there and the majority of it not being on a merit, but rather on a tenure system. I've seen, I've traveled a lot around the world and I'm really embarrassed and ashamed that teachers, the profession, is one of the most respected, it should be the most respected profession out there in the world, but yet our country is actually having, teaching and education is one of the lowest priorities that the government spends its money on. That, of course, in turn turn out to be a lower salary and benefits and respect and understanding to this profession that we very much need. Teachers can easily make a lot more money at private schools or in the private corporate industry out there. So, we need to make sure our teachers are happy, happy teachers, happy students, and therefore our students will come up a lot better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question just so I can understand? 10% of districts in the state of California have merit systems. Torrance Unified School District is one of them. What is your understanding of the merit system and what does it promote? So, if we're referring to teachers, to me, that is the accountability and performance of individual teachers. And I support that and I feel that if there is any issue or concern about that, that I would be open to discussing it. But as far as I can understand, if it's only 10% of the school districts and we are one of them, that would be what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
I'm just trying to understand what this merit system is. So, to be honest, I'm not going to deceive you guys, I got zero clue what this merit system is. So, I'm going to have to, I was trying to listen in and it didn't seem like I got any clarity up here about what the merit system is. So, I'm going to kind of have to decline even trying to answer this question. I apologize for that.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
You didn't Google it? The way I understand the merit system has nothing to do with teachers, it has to do with our certified or non-certificated employees. And the merit system is a method of keeping track of their process of moving up the scale so they get pay raises and move up their employment positions because each non-teacher employee has a different path. So, the merit system helps keep them on that particular path so they can continue to move up. And it also, if I remember correctly, allows them to make a shift from one particular group to another and still keep their merit with them. It's a part of the process that the merit system feeds. It has nothing to do with teachers, it has everything to do with our non-certificated employees.
Thank you.
Okay.
Glad I was last. I wish you were first. It would be a whole lot more dangerous.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the state of California changed school funding with the introduction of Local Control Funding Formula, also known as LCFF. With this, the state also introduced Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP, LCAP. What is your understanding of the plan and what has been your participation, if any, with these initiatives? And we'll start with Ms. Deutsch.
So, actually, the Local Control Funding Formula and the LCAP, I really have started from when it began. It was an incredible learning curve. We all had to learn and embrace it and try to figure out what specifically was going to be categorized because there weren't going to be any more categorical funds per se. So, what we needed to do is we needed to break down and submit this incredible plan and we invited community leaders to help us with, you know, and there were different category representatives that needed to be involved to formulate and create the LCAP. Now, the Local Control Funding Formula is a formula that's broken down based on certain categories, one of them being English language learners as well as foster, okay, sorry. I just thought.
Okay. Mr. Warmers?
It's physically impossible to do any kind of deep dive into the LCAP or the LCFF in a minute. I'm not even going to try. I will tell you that I don't always agree with, this is an effort on Jerry Brown, he eliminated categorical funding from the past. It's a smart move on his part because he needed restructure funding and what he's done is forcing the school districts to come up with these huge gigantic plans that have got lots of Ts to cross and lots of Is to dot and then track the performance of them. It's a good idea. My problem is, is we're underfunded. As districts statewide, nationwide, California is 46th out of 50 in funding. The great state of Mississippi spends more money on their kids than we do. It's embarrassing. I'm the only politician you'll hear say this. We have to fix Prop 13. I don't want to eliminate it, I don't want to throw Grandma out of her house, but it's broken and we have to fix it. Jerry Brown's right, we have to do something the way we spend money on our schools, but one of the first things we have to do is spend more money on our schools. We do not spend nearly enough. The LCAP and the LCFF, I'll talk for hours about it, if you want to see me afterwards. I'm not going to waste your time now.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Hahn?
Obviously, the LCAP, it has eight priorities that the state requires, right? And you've got to focus on those eight priorities. But my understanding of the LCAP, my experience with the LCAP was in our school site council. The school site council is where, the reason why you get this idea of the LCAP is that you get community involvement, right? So, the school site council, you have the principal, you have a teacher, you have parents all coming together and there's an LCAP plan, right? And so, you discuss that LCAP plan. Here's the thing, though, when you go there, when you're a parent, you have no clue what she's talking about. There's all these categories, all this budget, all this money, right? And so, therefore, basically, she's just simply asking us to stamp it, you know, because we're not educated enough to understand what all these categories are, right? And so, every principal, in my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to come up with the LCAP plan every year, how they use the money, how they're going to fix those priorities that they're supposed to focus on and how they're going to spend it. I think that we need to have more teacher involvement, more student, parent involvement to make sure that is a priority of our school and what we want to see.
Thank you. And Ms. Lu?
Yes, hi. Although I'm not on the school, my understanding of the Local Control Formula is instead of the state, and most of our school funding comes from our state and not anywhere else due to the constitution, but is that Sacramento will give us a big chunk of money, starting in 2015, I believe it was, and just let us decide what we want to do, how much money we want to spend on this subject or that subject, or how much money we want to spend on teachers versus infrastructure or books or resources of that kind. That's my understanding of it in a very, very, summarize a simple way of saying it. I believe that with my background and seeing how the California legislature works in Sacramento, there are a lot more ways we can bring about to have more money to help in our system. And I think this is one of the major duties of being on a school board member is to figure out what the budget should be and where all the money should go into. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gerson?
In 21 years of teaching, this is my third go-around on school site council. I'm in the second year of this term. And, you know, three meetings is not enough, not enough for parents to learn, not enough for parents to give their input. When a principal comes in and goes, "Hey, here's the plan, here's how we're spending the money," and yes, as one of my colleagues has already said, it's overwhelming. And we need to take more time with parents and explain how much money, what we can spend it on and where it's going and generate more ideas and allow the community to really get involved in the plan. Because in multiple schools, I don't see that right now. So, I think we need to have more days, we need to have more people involved. I want to, you know, more community members should be able to give feedback to parents and really do a good job of making sure that we're spending the money where we value it. And then the accountability portion. If you're into the next school year and the new people come up, you may not hear how your school did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next question. With the creation of individual school site nonprofit foundations such as at Riviera Elementary, where the foundation has hired vocal, music, and computer teachers, what would you do to offset these inequities within schools? And we're going to start with Ms. Lu.
Hi. And in terms of these nonprofit foundations that you're referring to, I believe it is the PTA that the Riviera School and specifically raised their money and to be able to hire their own teachers. This is definitely not government money that they're using because I don't, if it is in any way government money that is being spent, school district money that's spent, it has to be completely equitable, meaning if it goes in Riviera Elementary School, it should also go into the West Schools, North Schools, Center Schools. But if the parents get together and they themselves put in all the effort and they donate their own money into it, I believe that they should be able to, be allowed to hire their own people that would supplement the education of their own kids. It's similar to us hiring a tutor or asking a friend to help out with our kid, that helps our own child. As long as it's government money, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
For me, that's what I did. At Adam Elementary School, I started the Adam Elementary Educational Alliance. And the basic idea was that I would organize fundraising event, which is our golf tournament every year, which raised about $20,000 for our school. And basically, what I did was get business partners in our local community to help our schools. And the beautiful thing about it was that it allowed the principal to utilize those funds as she sees fit, you know? It's basically, there's no regulation. When you have PTA, the funds are designated. You can't, it does very limitation what you can and cannot use it for, whereas if you do an alliance and outside fund, you can use it however you want it, for technology, for staff, for tutoring, you name it, you can do it. As long as we have the school site council keep accountability for that, she had the freedom to do what she would like. To me, I really believe that because even at a small school like Adam, we only have 430 students, but you have parents who are going to involve, who want to make a difference, why not? We should empower them and help them across all the schools. If other schools want to do it, I would love to help them start it off.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch?
We're referring to alliances. There, I would say there's maybe like maybe half a dozen schools currently right now that have this type of incentive to raise funds. I am a firm believer of equity and I don't think that we are being equitable when it comes to all students and all school sites, when there are certain school sites that have the ability to raise additional monies versus other schools that do not have the ability to do that. I find it, though, that it's wonderful that there are schools that have that ability and the parent volunteerism to drive and collect and support those. But it would be beneficial to be more equitable and to possibly identify other, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Warmers.
Nine years ago when I started this, Michael Beasley sits right over there, he can raise his hand and wave at everybody. He and several other people ganged up on me and took me aside and told me the advantages of raising funds locally. He was doing it for Yukon, the people from Riviera doing it there. Emotionally, esoterically, I'm against it. I voted for it yes every year because we're so badly funded. I don't like it, I really don't want to see us do it, but right now, there was a, 20 years ago, there was a local gentleman's club that had a golf tournament, they had a $10,000 check and nobody would take it because it was a gentleman's club. During that crash, during the 2009 crash, I would have posed with a check. We were so desperate for cash, I would do anything for it. Again, I don't like it, but I voted yes for it every year. Mark Stefan, who was also in our audience, had done a really good speech every time because he votes no, that's why we shouldn't do this. And I couldn't agree with him more, but I can't go to a school site and say, "You guys can't raise funding. You need your money, I understand, sell drugs if you have to." I understand.
Thank you. Mr. Gerson?
When my daughter started, she started at one of the three Title I elementary schools and now both my children go there. And I'm not going to go tell another parent that they can't raise money for their child, but I'm going to take care of my children. And as a community member, I volunteered and I ran financial literacy enrichment sessions. Our community, even if we don't have as much money, we have just as much talent. I would be going out to the parents and finding out what can we do, what can we as parents add and give our children the same experience. So, I may not be able to take money away from other parents who give that to theirs, but I most certainly can still offer my children wonderful experiences, the same experiences because we have a talented community and I tap into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the final question. What is your vision for education in this community and where do you see the district in the next 10 years going forward? And I'll start with Mr. Hahn.
As I stated at the very beginning, my vision for the school is really simple. There are three S's, right? Success, we want our kids to achieve success, and what avenue that they choose, whether it be academia, whether it be arts, whether it be athletics, that we enable them to pursue their dreams and to be successful at it and to figure out how we can make them more successful at what they want to do. Second, obviously, safety. Again, we have to make sure that our kids are in a safe environment, not only for physical threats, but for emotional threats as well, from anti-bullying to make sure that intruders don't come in, that we don't have onsite school shootings or whatever it may be. And obviously, we do have issues and I think that we have to better understand how can we be able to avoid those issues regarding our schools. Even recently, in the Daily Breeze, we saw the article, "What Happened to Cali Mayor." Those things happen and I think that we have to have a better understanding to prevent those issues happening. Lastly, is stability. We have to be able to prepare ourselves for the future. Again, with technology changing, with things are changing in the world, we have to be ready for that today. Stability, by the way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Mr. Gerson?
My big three first start with safe schools and strong conversations, getting the community involved in what we can really do to protect our children and, as I said, more counselors and programs to make our schools less bullying and more comfortable. We need to deal with our fiscal responsibility. We need to use our money in the right places in the way that the community feels and what they value. We need to reflect that. And then, everyone needs to be accountable. The administrator accountability system that I would love to see implemented so that all people in our district are given, you know, the opportunity to show their highest standards and are given the opportunity to improve. Also, choosing the next school superintendent is going to be incredibly important and that is really what's going to determine the culture of our school district and how welcoming families are going to be and their input and how welcomed teachers and classified employees are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Deutsch, same question.
So, to me, I have a lot of priorities, but one of them is the 21st century classroom with integrated technology. In order for us to compete with our neighboring school districts, we need to have our students prepared and given the adequate technology to compete. The other thing is that we consistently have high school graduation rates. This year was 96%. I mean, a couple of years ago, it was up to 99%. So, I want to maintain that level of excellence. Safety, safety to me is high priority. We should never be comfortable with what we have, we should always be aware and work with our community leaders, the fire department, police department to ensure that our students and staff and teachers are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
Hi. I have so many visions for our school district, especially 10 years from now, but one of them being very importantly is to have our school district be one of the top school districts in our state. And we have very much a lot of potential here that we can have. We have a great resource being located here in the South Bay with all the surrounding community businesses. There's just so much going on. I want us, every single 34 schools of our school district to be a distinguished school recognition or blue ribbon recognition that they have. Like I mentioned earlier in my opening, I want to make sure our schools are up to date and to prepare all students for the challenges and the opportunities of the 21st century. The economy is changing. What the kids need, the kind of knowledge that they need, the kind of skills that they need, need to keep, you know, come from our education. I myself have been educated for a very long time. I like to believe that. I was a very good student myself, I'm still always taking notes at all times, but technology is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warmers?
I don't agree with a lot of things Jerry Brown says, but a few years ago, he gave a speech where he said, "All of us have attended school, so we all have an opinion on how it should be operated and how it should be run." Yes, he's right, we all have an opinion. If you do this like I've been doing for nine years, you talk to a lot of people, you've got a lot of opinions. I've now fallen back to where I rely a lot on the experts, they seem to know what they're talking about, they seem to understand how the classroom works, and I've got a bit of a trump card on this. I come from a long line of teachers, my dad, my mom, my brother, sister-in-law, aunts and uncles, they're all in the classroom today. Well, my dad's retired, my mom's retired, but they're all in the classroom, were in the classroom, so I understand how teaching actually works on a ground floor level, but it's really difficult to get outside your head and outside your classroom and learn new things while you're there. The old adage, if you're out there to drain the swamp, it's hard to do that when you're up to your butt and alligators. So, I look to where we've got experts, where we can learn things from other, other school districts. My little brother teaches in Colorado, and he's been in RTI for over a decade and a half. Those are the kind of things that I'm looking towards. So, that's where my vision lies.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes all of our questions, and we are now going to have closing statements. And we're going to start with Mr. Warmers.
Here we go, bragging again. Okay. I am someone who enjoys the responsibility of leadership, and I have a military background, so I both know how to lead and follow. That's part of me spending four years in the Air Force. I've also been a small business owner for over 20 years, so I've signed the front of paychecks, I understand how businesses operate, and like it or not, the school district is a very large business. There are 1,100 school districts in California, we're the 84th largest. Because of these experiences, I feel I have the ability to make hard decisions, and I've done them a couple of times. Like I said, my second or third meeting, we had to lay off 150 people. That was a very hard decision. I've proven this over the past two terms with the school board, and it's starting with the difficult times of the Great Recession, that I wanted to make sure everyone understands that. During my time on the school board, I've watched our employees, some of the best in the South Bay, get better every year. It's been an exciting thing to do. And I realize that we spent 88% of our budget on salary and benefits. It's worth the money. We've implemented new state and federal mandated standards and programs. We remodeled all of our schools. We've had new gyms, auditoriums, Safeguard Aquatic Center. It's been a busy few years. I'm proud of the work I've done. I hope you'll let me do it again. I do. Here I am hurrying for no reason.
Yes, this is a minute, a minute and a half. I forgot to mention that.
Oh, backup. We've implemented, not that this is stressful or anything. We've implemented many new state and federal mandated programs. These programs are actually directed by the state of California to us. It's not something we reach out in the sky and grab. It's not a decision that we're going to go do this because we think it makes good sense. A lot of this is driven by the state of California. During all these new changes, we've actually remodeled every school site. We were adding auditoriums at all the high schools, remodeled the auditorium at Torrance High. We've added gyms at, we're adding gyms at all the middle schools, and we've built an aquatic center, a very nice aquatic center. I'm proud of the work I've done. I hope you guys can support me again and do another term. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lu?
Hi. So, it's a minute and a half, but I, I want, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but thank you again very much for the Homer Association and all the board members here. But I know putting on a candidate's form like this takes a lot of work. It's not just, hey, let's all meet up, you know, and, and go for a rent-a-park, please. So, I, I want to thank you very much sincerely for the community involvement that you're allowing all of us to be involved in, and of course, the audience. But, please, if you did not pick up one of these in the back where they're allowing all of us to have a little flyer, a little campaign material to be out there, if you haven't picked one up, please go to my website. It is bettylu.com. My little humble flyer is made by my very great assistant, campaign assistant, Tony. Hey, I'm right there. Please wave. Please go bother him if we don't have enough flyers, and he'll photoc some more. And he helped me put on websites and put us on our pictures. And you can find a lot more of how to contact me over there if you have any questions that weren't addressed at this forum, or if you have any concerns, anything you want to, please contact me. So, I just want you to know that I, I am very approachable and open, like I said earlier. I have been endorsed by a lot of our local leaders from west to east, north to south, everywhere, all about. And because they know me, and I've been in this community for a very long time, with my background in being a community organizer, and also, you can vote for three people, I hope to be one of yours, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hahn?
Again, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. The reason why I'm impressed with all of you today is because you're just like me. When I'm not an educator, I'm just someone that really cares about our schools. Actually, you're better than me, because I never came to one of these things before. And so, that's why this is a whole new experience. So, I want to applaud you for making that effort and to really care. We all do our own part in whatever we can. And that's the way I see myself as a person who's running. You know, I'm not an educator, even though I'm surrounded by education. My wife's an RTI teacher, my sister is a teacher at Central Valley District, my brother-in-law is a professor at Cal State Fullerton in higher education, one of my closest friends is a professor of higher education, APU. I'm surrounded by education. But for me, the way that I feel like what I can bring is to bring a sense of consensus building, to bring about reconciliation. That's my gift. I think my gift is really to help people come along together, even opposing sides, to come to a decision that's most effective. And I think that sometimes you have to make those hard decisions, and I'm able to make those hard decisions. I've been a pastor for 17 years. I started my church 17 years ago, still pastor in the same church. And the thing is, all these issues always come up, but I have to determine, how can I help people along the way? And that's what I think I can do for the school board as well, to bring about different, to see different things and to bring a consensus about it. That's my hope for our district as well. I have a card back there as well, if you want more information about who I am and what I believe. And hopefully, as you heard today, again, I love the board. I love Mike and Don and Terry, I'm with Terry and Martha, they did a great job. Same time, I love the PTA as well, so I hope you can bring it all together.
Thank you. Ms. Deutsch?
I first want to thank you for allowing me to come and, and speak.